Is out. Are these on?
Can you, am I loud? I'm loud.
What's that, Marge? What's that?
No, you'll get your face in it though, seeing how far away.
Mine is very loud. Like, I just touched it and I could hear it.
Yeah, well, I'm way back. That's why I have mine back there.
Can you hear if I'm sitting back here? No. Caitlin. Caitlin Chukasa? I saw that. Oh. Oh. She will. I saw that name and I went, oh my god! Yeah. 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 I, we may, I have it all documented. Christine got put in jail. You got put in jail. Let's just be honest. You got put in jail. It was a pretty dangerous. Yes, I did. It was a big celebration last year. I remember she helped make the work for that. Twenty-five. No, you gotta go to Wells Beach Condom. Wells Condom. Blue Truck. Oh my god. All the different, so much fun. There's a crowd, John. Be careful. There's a big crowd. Now, you want more of this, huh?
What's that?
You want more of this tonight? Good evening. Welcome to the Wyndham Raymond School District Board of Directors meeting. It is Wednesday, June 4th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We're in the Jordan Small Middle School gym. May I have a roll call, please?
Jessica Bridges.
Here.
Jody Carroll.
Here.
Caitlin Downs.
Here.
Marge Gavoni.
Here.
Shar Jewell. Joe Kellner.
Here.
Grace Lovett.
Here.
Christina Small.
Here.
Ginny Woodman.
Here.
Jolene Bailey.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
The only adjustments to the agenda for tonight are the, um, few additions on the appointments from when the agenda went out Friday, but otherwise, the agenda is the same.
Okay. Now is the opportunity for public input. Seeing as there is no public, we will move on to superintendent's report.
So, couple of things that I, I wanna share, and I, just first of all, I think this is going to be Shar's last meeting, and just wanted to thank her for her service over the last four, five years. I know she completed a term and then went on to do an additional three-year term, and just wanted to thank her for her time on finance and for her time on the board. One of the lasting impacts of Shar will be within our budget books. Some clarity and a little more transparency on year-to-date numbers, as well as some of the percentages spent and going through the budget process. Just appreciate some of the, the hard questions that she asked and her willingness to communicate out to the general public all the good things that are happening in RSU-14 and, and being a champion for our students. So, uh, just thank her for that. It's a big commitment to come and spend a lot of time here on the board, and, um, just thank her for a job well done. Also, tonight is our last meeting for Jolene, and she will be graduating on Sunday at 1:30 at Cross Arena. And, uh, the board does have a gift for her. We'll make sure that she gets it this week. I know it's a busy, busy week for seniors with a number of activities and evening activities going on, but we'll make sure on behalf of the board that she receives that gift. Just wanna thank her for all of her, her work, and again, being able to be willing, as a high school student, to show up and spend some time with a bunch of adults who are talking about policy and things that are happening within schools. With that being said, Christine and I had a chance to interview Jolene's replacement this week, and pleased to announce that Maggie Sewell, who is a rising junior at Wyndham High School, who is very, very active at Wyndham High School, serving on the, um, back committee, which is the Building Achievement Council as a student rep, and, uh, also as a strong rep within the Student Council at Wyndham High School. So, already has shown herself as a leader in that building. She's super excited to take on this role and to learn how policy is made and how the board makes decisions. She will be here at the meeting next week, and we'll have an opportunity to meet the board and kind of kick off her processes being the new student rep for the board. A couple of other things, I've, of people that I wanna recognize tonight. As we begin to wind down the school year, it's hard to believe we're already June 4th, but to recognize our retirees, and Christine and I will have a chance next week to get around the district and present a small gift on behalf of the board to all of our retirees. But Sue Austin, who's a social worker at Wyndham Middle School, who's been in the district, uh, if I remember correctly, over thirty-five years, and has had a lasting impact on students and student mental health in the district. Roy DeShane, who retired in October. Roy was a long-time fix-it handyman, made sure everything in the buildings, uh, ran correctly. Roy originally came to the district when, um, Wyndham Primary School was built, and he was a, a job supervisor, and decided, you know what? He liked this place and decided to stick around, and he's now back working for us, doing some delivery runs, and also, um, he lives right next door to the new school project, and so keep an eye on things that are happening there for us. Patty Gordon, forty years as a music teacher here in, in Raymond and then at RSU-14. I know, um, the Raymond Elementary School had a chance to recognize her today at the end-of-year school assembly. Just a wonderful, wonderful music instructor. Deb Hall, who has been the attendance secretary since roughly nineteen ninety-nine at Wyndham Middle School, and has been the face of the front door of Wyndham Middle School, and also just a huge school advocate, uh, making sure that, um, kids are taken care of within that, within the Wyndham Middle School. Bob Hickey, two thousand and four. He's been here twenty-one years. He's the first tech director for, uh, Wyndham School Department and then for RSU-14. Just done an outstanding job and has grown that particular role and has grown our technology across the district. Alan Hodgson. Many of you don't know Alan. Alan, uh, retired in, uh, end of October. Alan was a groundskeeper for over forty-five years here in the district. Started in high school. His dad, Kermit, um, for a long, long time was our district groundkeeper. Alan's bedroom, believe it or not, used to be the upstairs conference room and central office when they lived there. Melissa Howe, who's been a special ed tech for over thirty years in the district, Wyndham Primary School. She was also spent some time at Wyndham High School and, uh, at Wyndham Middle School. Joni Merrill, uh, longtime physical education teacher right here. We're in her classroom right now. Many, many years. In addition, uh, Joni served as, um, the bus driver for many sports trips here at Jordan Small Middle School, uh, running teams all across the state of Maine in the Pine Tree League. Sharon Meisner, who was a bus driver up here in Raymond for close to forty years, and retired in December, and just one of those people that had just such a great impact on students when they arrived first thing in the morning and was able to make that connection. Charlie Ortman. Charlie Ortman has been a longtime music teacher at Wyndham Primary, uh, Wyndham Primary School. Wyndham Primary School, Manchester School, uh, for almost forty years. Charlie's been a longtime member of the district, and it's just been a great, great influence on students. Carol Prebe, who is a fourth-grade teacher. Carol, twenty-plus years at the Manchester School, fourth grade. She is one that definitely put a love of the outdoors with kids, was constantly bringing in, um, owl pellets and having kids do environmental studies, and then getting kids outside to bring the outdo, is outside in. Joyce Rose, who's been an ed tech at Wyndham Primary School and actually spent some time at Wyndham Middle School for a little bit of time. Just an outstanding support person who has worked so hard to provide academic supports to students. Kathy Slatt, uh, who is at Wyndham Primary School as well, has been with us for a few years. Sheila Smith, who is a special ed tech from Wyndham Primary School. I don't know how many, um, years that Sheila's been with us. And then Martha Vance, secretary at Wyndham Primary School. Martha was a longtime fixture at Wyndham Primary, secretary for at least fifteen to twenty years, and, um, is just was the heart and soul of everything there in the office. So, all of our retirees, just thank them, um, years and years in service amongst them, many of which, um, had most of their years of service here in the district, and just wanna thank them for an outstanding job well done. Couple last quick things. BAR. Some good news with BAR that, um, I know some people are aware of. The, uh, Maine Department of Education has been able to restore coaching for, uh, Wyndham High School, Wyndham Primary School, Jordan Small Middle School. In addition, we learned this week that they've also are willing to open up the coaching model to Wyndham Middle School. So, it's fantastic news for us because one of the pieces we were trying to work on is, uh, with Michelle and Kayla here, is how do we start branching into, uh, Wyndham Middle School and getting that staff ready as we combine the two staffs together? What it will pay for is for coaching and all the materials throughout the year. What it does not cover is it won't cover, um, stipends we would've paid staff for summer training. So, we've been working internally. I know the board in this budget included some money for BAR. We'll be using that money to support staff coming in for professional development, making sure that they have what they need. And then just a couple of last reminders. Graduation Sunday at 1:30, uh, at the Cross Arena. Kataden's graduation is, uh, Thursday evening at 6:30 PM, and adult ed graduation is, um, a week from Thursday in the auditorium, and I think that's 6:30 PM as well. So, a lot of things happening, a lot of good things across the district. And if board members have any questions about times and dates and parking, any of that, please reach out, and we can help you out with that.
All right. Next item is board roundtable. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Grace?
Just very briefly, I, I like to always mention when I'm able to get into the schools, and I wish I could do it a whole lot more. That'll be my goal for next year. But to get into Raymond Elementary School for the first-grade market day was a lot of fun. The energy of the kids, um, both the first graders and then the second graders who came to purchase the project, products that the first graders has, had made was terrific. My only regret was that I did not purchase one of my granddaughter's products, but, oh, well, she forgave me. And also, I had a chance to see, uh, some of the students at Jordan Small School when they revealed the benches that they built for the front entrance. I know that others were there as well. And I really appreciate Ms. Bowley letting us know about that. The best part of it, the benches were lovely, but the best part was the students had identified a need and addressed it. And so, just seeing that kind of, oh, there's a problem, we can fix, and they fixed it, was, was really terrific. So, I'm glad to, to be able to do that.
Jody?
Just have a request, um, for next year. I know that email's an okay tool, and we've talked about the website, but I wondered if next year, could we consider, uh, teachers, uh, district staff facing form? I've got this going on in my classroom on this day at this time where they'd like to invite the board, and it just dumps into an Excel spreadsheet that the board could just access live and just see where things are.
I mean, I would love that, cuz I think one of these events, we literally got notified the day before.
Sure.
And I know I had brought that up at one, at one of our goal-setting workshops, whether it was this year or last year, I don't know. So, we can look into, um, making that happen or what the implementation might look like, cuz I would definitely like, I think more of us would attend if we knew, you know, in advance.
Yeah, I can open it. I've got two hours. I have four hours today, what's going on in the district. It would just be great to.
Yeah, we can take a look at, seeing what we can do.
To do that. And I would echo just what Grace was talking about, getting, I did, wasn't in the schools much this year, but had the opportunity to attend the final assembly for RES here. If you get a chance to go to one of the year-end assemblies, they're so much fun. The kids, especially at the elementary level, I know we focus a lot on the grads, but kids are just having such a terrific time. And if my kiddos come home, how was your day? Good. But it, it doesn't even begin to capture the energy and how much fun they're actually having. Just wanna say thank you to, really, the teachers and administrators for wrapping up the school year in such a specific and intentional way, because I know every classroom, they do. They do these countdowns, they do fun activities, they have assemblies. It's, it's done on purpose, and it's meant to be really fun and to send our students home to families and guardians in a really positive way. So, just wanna comment on that. I enjoyed that today. That's all I had tonight.
Grace, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I, I just was, um, told by Ms. Peavy that there's a pre-K art. I'm not sure what she called it. I forget what she said. Um, Friday at two. Art what?
Art crawl.
Art crawl. Oh, crawl. I was gonna say walk, but I guess crawl is maybe more important, more appropriate. Anyway, two o'clock Friday, so I will try to pop over and, and see some artwork. I missed the art show this year. I will not miss it again.
Joe?
Thanks. Good stuff. I, I too, and I'm sure everybody echoes this, wish, uh, wish Shar well. It's been a pleasure to, uh, serve with her, and I really enjoy getting to know her and some of the things she's brought to the board, so great. I would like to just mention my favorite topic, which is the budget. I've seen a lot more conversation out there in the public about concerns about the RSU-14 budget that we presented. I know it's tough, and I said this last time. I think we were in this room, actually, when I said I, I know any increase in demand on funding from anybody is a lot to ask, and we, we need to do it well and do it judicious, judiciously. But I feel like we did that, and we do that. And I think that it's important for folks that are concerned about this budget and might be considering voting against this budget, which it seems like there's a bit of a groundswell of people that are not in favor of this budget. It's really important to think about the outcome of a no vote and what that means. The increases in this budget are, for all intents and purposes, unavoidable. A, a big portion of it is paying teachers wages. We should be paying teachers so we stay competitive. The middle school is coming. We don't, we can't control that at this point. No matter how you feel about it, those, those costs are coming. I personally think it's gonna be a great thing for our district, but we can't change that. So, even if we come back to the table, those don't go away. The teacher increases don't go away. The increased cost of utilities don't go away. So, we have, we'd have to sit up here and, and look at each other and, and look deep and say, what do we cut? What don't we do? What don't we do as a district? What supports do we take away from students? What extracurriculars? What activities? What academics can't we do? You know, those are the questions we would have to start asking if there's a no vote on this budget. And I think it's really important for us to listen. Always be cautious about how we're spending other people's money. That's what we're doing. As a district, it's just done so well here. There's so much thought and preparation and analysis that goes into how every dollar coming into this RSU is spent. And I think we're really lucky. And I think as you compare RSU-14, Wyndham and Raymond to other surrounding districts, I think you'd see that it is judicious, and it's, it's not extravagant. I, I think it's really important that folks try to inform themselves. Of course, everybody has a right to vote, how they feel they should vote, but think real hard about what happens with a no vote. I think that's important. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a minute to share, since we last met, Manchester and Middle School held some combined concerts, so they had, um, a night for band, a night for orchestra, a night for chorus. And I really love the structure of that because they started with the younger students, so you could really see the skill progression as they went up. I think it was also exciting for the younger students to see, you know, what they might be able to achieve, um, if they move forward in those programs. The participation in these was huge. The orchestra concert was literally standing room only on the stage. There were, there were kids holding violins standing up in the back because there were not enough chairs they couldn't fit. So, I'm really excited. We will, um, in a handful of years, have a second auditorium. We're gonna need it. And I also just wanted to thank the parents for their supportive music programs. By and large, we do not purchase instruments for our kids, so all of those violins and trumpets and clarinets and, and, you know, a cello is either rented or purchased by a parent. So, um, just, uh, thank you for allowing your students to participate in those, um, programs. It was just, it was just really wonderful to see. And if that's it with everybody, we can move on to. Oh, sorry, Marge, go ahead.
Okay. Just a quickie. Speaking about, I know we've all talked, and been, most of us have been to a lot of the things going on in the schools and all the classrooms. I wanna, I, I think we need to thank the parents. I don't think I have, uh, can remember going to so many classrooms during, in the middle of the day when most parents are working and seeing, and, and basically, as a school board member, and I don't have any grandkids, they're, they're past that. But I go because I, I wanna be there for the student who doesn't have a parent that can make it, whatever. And it is amazing how much family shows up to support these kids. It's really the coolest thing, uh, and it's more than, than I think I've seen, and I think it's great. And I just want hurrah to the parents. I mean, a lot of people have taken time off from work, and I, I'm so happy to see that they're so involved in their kids and that they show up when they, when it's needed, it's needed for the student. But, thank you again.
Grace?
Sorry. I neglected to mention one more thing, cuz it just happened yesterday, and although my muscles are still feeling it, I wanna mention it. Thank you very much to the superintendent for providing, some of us had a chance to go on a sidewalk of the new middle school site. And truly, truly, this is so exciting, um, the facility that our students are going to have in a couple of years. It's amazing, and, um, it's also amazing how much our superintendent knows about construction. So, I was glad that at least some of us were able to go. So, I hope that the public is following on the website and following along with that information. It's really exciting. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to committee reports. Has finance met? Has facilities met?
Facilities has not met, but we will be having a final meeting. Probably, you'll, you'll get the report out. You can either read the website, cuz I don't know, know if we have a meeting after that or not. Or, um, we can send it out to you, um, by email. But while we're on this, um, I think it would probably be a good time, and Mr. Howell can give us just a brief, we did go on that walk yesterday, and give us just a, a very brief update as to where are we on the middle school.
Sure. So, um, just a quick thumbnail of, of where we're at. If you drive by the site, there's a couple of big towers that are rising out of the ground. Those are stair towers. If you drive by the site, there's a couple of big towers that are rising out of the ground. Those are stair towers. Right now, the tallest one is only about a third built. So, if you can imagine the height, that's gonna come with that four-story portion. They have poured one complete wing as far as footing foundations. They're getting ready to set footings and foundation forms for one of the other front wings. Things continue to be on time, under budget. Tomorrow and Friday, the front entrance will be paved all the way up into the site over that new section, which has the retaining wall up to the new back parking lot. So, all that will be paved over the next two days, which also for our neighbors will reduce the amount of dust. Steel was due to arrive the end of this month, beginning of next month, and they will start erecting steel onsite. I've been told that once that happens, things start to move really, really quickly and we'll start to see the shape of the building form in a very, very short period of time. So, a lot of different decisions still being made as far as you get on site and one drawing which is set on top of another drawing which is set on top of another drawing. And sometimes not everything lines up, so a wall's gotta move by three inches and another pipe's gotta be rerouted. So, our team that you hired has just done an absolutely fantastic job of navigating all of those issues. Change orders have been at an absolute minimum at this crucial phase as things are getting going. So, a lot of planning and progress went to that. Also for the board, we'll be providing a listing of summer projects. First project which will kick off June 18th is the new primary school cafeteria gym roof. That will get going. We will be closing a portion of the playground and we'll be working out some messaging for that just as safety and scaffolding, trying to keep kids off of that particular section and maybe some adults as well off of that. Which also, we're hopeful that first two weeks of school, they will actually have the new gym floor in. So, we'll have a minimal disruption to that beginning. Two days later, Raymond Elementary School will be closing for the summer and electricity will be shut off. And you will hear the generator running days, helping the contractors. It looks like the critical electrical part is currently being manufactured, is on a truck next week and will be making its way to Raymond, Maine. And that's the generator transfer switch that we had some questions of whether or not it would be being manufactured in time. So, that is on its way next week and it looks like we're gonna be good to go. So, it looks like at this point, everything's on schedule with that and we'll be able to take care of things. Not a lot of work at Manchester this summer. Next summer will be the parent drop-off loop and some further construction with another ball field. But a lot of work this summer. Bill's team has 10 weeks to get all these projects done. Everyone is lined up, ready to go, and I think you're gonna see a lot of changes happening over the summer. But we're gonna work on getting a one-page or two-page or maybe even a three-page cheat sheet for the board, all the projects and things that Bill's gonna be working on.
Thank you. Policy. Policy met on Monday, June 2nd, and we're gonna get into some detail, but essentially just for the policy portion for our minutes, we did review our cell phone policy and met with our administrator around some of the survey data that we had. Our next meeting will be tentatively, if we need it based on tonight's outcome, June the 16th via Zoom, if we need to make any changes to, in our work tonight. And then, we'll be done for the summer. I think we've earned a nice break in policy. So, we will meet again in the fall on the 9th, I believe, of September, if I have that date correct, at 9:30.
8th?
Thank you. September 8th at 9:30. We'll take up our work again.
Curriculum.
So, we met just before here this evening with the principals and we heard about the spring data for NWEA and I-Ready and they compared them to fall, which we will lovingly deep dive into later on this evening. They reflected the goals that they had from winter, so we got to see the comparison of what they did to implement to do better and see how the kids grew from there. And next year, then our next meeting is next year and we'll update the website and schedule presentations. If we plan on continuing with the data and coming up with, with a plan on how to correct anything and if you guys have any ideas, let us know so we can kinda have an idea of what our plan is for next year.
Thank you. All right.
Grace?
Grace?
It's not on that. It's Wyndham Raymond Adult Ed. I didn't know if we wanted a few words about that. Sorry.
Yeah, that would've been in Board Roundtable. Does anybody object to her updating? Real quick, go ahead.
My apologies. I wasn't sure where that went. Just very quickly, there was a meeting yesterday about, from the advisory board for Wyndham Raymond Adult Ed. I'll share the full minutes with the board. I'll forward them on to you. But just to mention the graduation that Superintendent Howell already mentioned, there will be 21 students receiving their diploma, which is really fantastic. Two of them are multilingual learners who also earned workforce credentials. And so, again, that's really something to commemorate. And just mentioning that there's not much summer programming because they are working on the new registration platform and website. And so, just also mention one more thing. He's always open to some more advisory board members. If you're interested, let him know. And also, if you're interested in offering a class, contact Wyndham Raymond Adult Ed and they will take that under consideration. Thank you. Sorry. I'll remember next time to do it in the right spot.
That's okay. You can leave your mic on. Report to the secretary.
Thanks. I move to approve the minutes of the May 7th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Board discussion. All of us in favor? Motion carries. Next item?
I move to approve the minutes of the May 14th, 2025 Public Budget Meeting.
Second.
Board discussion. All of us in favor? Motion carries. Next item, policy discussion. Go ahead, Jody.
Okay, so, Policy Committee is bringing a discussion item to you on the agenda tonight. Just gonna outline the process for the public and to remind everyone where we are at with this one. The Policy Committee started our work on the Policy JFCK Cellular Devices in the District on February 24th. So, it's been a really intentional process. We've not rushed through it and we certainly have taken a look at this at a good cadence. It's a complex issue with multiple considerations, including emergency access to parents, accommodations for medical transportation considerations, et cetera. So, if you can imagine it, we've probably discussed it. We want to also let you know that this has a regulation that normally is put with this policy and that would give us the acceptable use and any interventions or discipline actions that would be taken. This is brought to the Wyndham High School Administration as a request for board review. The intent was for the Policy Committee and full board in coordination with the administration and other interested parties to potentially either change access to the cell phone, to a cell phone-free environment or evaluate the current policy and regulation for opportunities for improvement as we often do with our committee. And then, if there's merit, then bring it to the full board. So, the committee has met several times with the overarching question that we posed before we began our work. What are we looking to achieve with our review? And we do that with each policy that we sit down. Who brought it? Why are we looking at it? And what's the intent and what's our goal? Our answers were really distilled down to a few highlights that I'll share in a moment. Our process to date was that we met with the Wyndham High School administrators to review our current policy and regulation and the current state within the schools, reviewed proposed legislation at that time. There were some changes, multiple changes in terms of the legislative proposals. We reviewed markups from our governing bodies with Drummond and Woodsum and MSMA were available. We drafted a staff survey and reviewed the results. We looked at articles that the Main Principals Association has put out in terms of other school districts that have looked at their cell phone policies. We've looked at studies from the Intentional Journal of Mental Health and Addiction that was shared by our superintendent into the committee. And then, we've looked at the American Bar Association as well that some of our committee members shared. We looked at some literature such as The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt and other resources. We're presenting the full board with a draft that further restricts cell phone use in schools with a defined school day and a restriction of cellular devices to be off and away for the full day on campus at all times. We're also proposing that all field trips in elementary bus runs are no cellular device zones. Field trips could be by exception per the chaperone or per the teacher, but elementary bus runs would be a no cellular device zone. Wyndham High School students may bring a device to school for use before they enter the building and after the school day ends when they leave for extracurricular events or leave campus, but they are not to be used in school without medical exceptions or other exemptions. Violations or intervention will be determined by administration and we're proposing to remove the regulation completely that currently prescribes the discipline and intervention of the policy and any acceptable use implications. So, when we looked at the answers to this complex topic in terms of what were we trying to achieve, we really came down to a couple of key concepts that I'd like to introduce to start the discussion with the team so that we can garner feedback for next steps. Looking at a reduction in distractions through the academic day as cellular devices are designed to be addictive with features that encourage compulsive checking and prolonged use, remove constant notifications and the lure of social media that disrupts students' ability to focus with the goal to address diminished attention spans and that the school day is a defined space and place that should be protected for learning for our students to reach their full potential daily.
I'm gonna let Joe start us off because he needs to step out.
Sure, thank you. So, I'd like to commend the process here on this policy. There's been a lot of research and a lot of conversation that's been had as part of this. And I know this is something that other districts, not only in Maine, but nationally are grappling with and seeing the ill effects of mobile device technology on the learning experience. We heard from an administrator this week and I think that we were presented with some really interesting counterpoints to consider. I think the biggest is a very reasonable one to consider and that's the impact on administration of trying to enforce this policy. It's a big policy to enforce. You've got a lot of students. Most of them have a mobile device. As Jody alluded to, it's highly tempting to access and having, the word ban sounds strong, but a ban throughout the school day is certainly a big lift. With that being said, I, my conclusion after reading all the survey feedback, looking at some of the literature, hearing arguments from both perspectives and frankly, having several conversations with parents of students of multiple ages, I think this is right. I think this policy as it is, is written well. I recognize the challenge. I'm empathetic to the challenge, but I think at the same time, taking this step will enhance the learning environment and really enhance our schools. So, my comments aren't all that complex. I think as a board, we should bring this forward at our next meeting and frankly, vote for it. I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I would just say, I agree. I know my sixth grader is allowed to bring her phone. She keeps it off during the day if anything, like anything after school changes. Especially middle school and high school, they have a lot of after-school things, but otherwise, they don't need to turn it on. They keep it in their book bags, keep it turned off, ask for permission if they need to access it. But otherwise, they don't need it until after-school hours. So, I agree with you.
Marge?
Okay, I'm not on the Policy Committee, so I was not part of those conversations that went back and forth. So, since this, we were notified of this, I have given it a lot, probably a lot more thought than I should have given it, more than anything else I think I've ever thought about, thought about this. I think my first thought was the fact that, while we have a policy presently that for some reason or other, we're not able to withhold, we can't bring it to fruition. Staff has an issue with it. Administration seems to have an issue with it because they feel like they're the ones that have to police. There's inconsistencies throughout the high school as to how that piece is enforced and which makes it difficult for staff, also makes it much more difficult for students because the expectation changes as they go through their day. So, but the thing I thought that was really kind of odd, when I thought about it more, because I am in the middle school and I am in the high school a lot and I always am. And there's one thing, I gave it more thought now that this has been brought to my attention. They're not allowed in the middle school. When I'm in the middle school and I walk through the middle school, there is a lot of conversation in the halls as students change from class to class, in the cafeteria. There's a lot more conversation, there's a lot more socialization. There are not, nobody is glued to an electronic device. Same thing when I go into the classrooms or whatever. There's a lot more attention being paid to the teacher. When I walk through the high school, that is not the case. I have, I actually have to watch where I'm going because students have bumped into me because they're all, the majority of them are on their phones, walking in between classes. There is not as much conversation. There's a lot of noise in the cafeteria because they're noisy, but there's a lot more of cell phone use there. You can kinda notice it. It's kind of, it's not the full attention I noticed anyway, as in classrooms, from students to the teachers. So, taking all that into consideration, and I'm not sure how they're gonna enforce this. I think it's sometimes, rather than being shipshot, it's easier to say, we're just not gonna do it, period, rather than leaving it up to the discretion of teachers. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping this is able to be enforced and the intent of why this is being done is taken the right way. It's so that staff and the students can really concentrate on education and not be the police and not get to that point. And I think there might be probably a transition time. One, next year, ninth graders are coming from the middle schools. Nope, they didn't have phones. So, they will be used to that. Seniors are gonna be gone, so everybody's bumping up. The juniors now will be seniors and they, seniors, God bless them, they live in their own world anyway. So, I think it's a matter of, after a couple of years, it's gonna be the norm, even though I think it's gonna be very difficult in the beginning. I know that was a lot, but that's kind of my perspective on it.
I'd like to clarify some things, because I have come to see this differently as we've had this conversation. So, I had the same perspective that our policy was not enforceable and not being followed. And actually, my, especially after speaking with Ryan this week, I think it is being followed. So, as we, I'll acknowledge, I don't think we necessarily have a problem in the middle school. It's really small. It's well handled. The high school, the current policy has an exception in the high schools that they can use it in the hallway and at lunch, passing time, so that's not a policy issue. And also, during class time with teacher permission. So, it, our current policy does allow for that. And I think what's happening is as, you know, Ryan and Phil and us are really good at not micromanaging teachers, which overall is, I think, a good thing. So, some teachers are saying, it's not a problem for me. I allow my students to use it. And then, other teachers are saying, no, this is class time and they are allowed to do that. But when a student moves from one class to the other, you then have this, you know, this argument, well, that teacher allowed me and why don't you? And that, I'm hoping to get rid of that, right? It's just, let's put it away and you can pick it up at the end of the day. So, I have some more comments, but I just wanted to comment on that piece. Was there anybody else that, go ahead, Shar.
I, sorry. Okay, let me do, can I just answer?
First, I want to apologize for my lateness to the meeting. It figures that in my four years on the board, this is the one and only time I've gone to the wrong place. So, anyway. So, just to follow up on what you said, Christina, so my soon-to-be graduating student on Sunday, thank God, she finally got her capstone done. I was about ready to kill Art and I think Ryan was too, but anyway. So, the feedback that she's been giving me over the years in the high school is that there's frustration amongst the students that want to behave, want to follow the rules with the inconsistency between teachers. And it's not just with the cell phone thing, it's all the rules. Because you've got some teachers that are really strict about holding kids to all of the rules and then some that are like, whatever, I don't care what you do. And then, you got some in between. And she said it was really hard to navigate that until you got used to the expectations of each individual teacher. And she always said, in not so many words, but it would just be easier if everybody had the same rules and followed them the same way. And I can't not agree with that. So, I just wanted to follow up with what you were saying.
Sorry, Marge, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to clarify. No, I understand what you're saying. I know they are allowed to use their phones. What I'm saying is, there is no, the social piece of the school is lost when all, when, because if I'm texting as I go through the hall and I get to a classroom, my mind is not on what period I'm going into. It's on what I didn't get to finish, that I was texting. I didn't finish making my plans with my friend. I didn't, you know, I didn't finish that.
I didn't finish making my plans with my friend, I didn't, you know, I didn't finish that. I know there are things in place that they can, but I think that just adds also to the distraction of keeping their minds elsewhere other than on whatever is going on in whichever class.
Grace?
So, ever since I started reading The Anxious Generation, I've been of a mind that the bell-to-bell ban is really what's best for the well-being, overall well-being of our students, knowing how critical their well-being is to their learning. And certainly, that is what our, our goal is, to have our students be successful academically, but a big piece of that is to be successful in their, their social well-being as well. Just the phrase, "When you know better, do better," comes to mind in terms of what we've learned about the addictive nature of, of devices, and that, yes, it's a very useful tool, it has its purposes, but that addictive piece of it really has taken a toll, I believe, onto many of our, our young people. And so I know that this will be a tough, tough change for a lot of folks, but I, as is any change often, but I do think it's worth the effort that it's going to take to help inform people and educate people, and most of all, educate our students. From the school district that has already done a bell-to-bell ban, they're seeing such positive results in terms of how students are, are feeling about themselves and about their learning. And so again, I, I realize the difficulties that lie ahead in this, but I think that that is really what's best for our kids. And so that's where I hope we will be going.
I always tell people that I wish I raised my kids in the 90s, and for, and one of the reasons is because of the cellphones, and you notice now at a younger and younger age, the screens do become more addictive, and having a break from that just for the school day, I think will eliminate some of those addictive tendencies perhaps, and also maybe help with some bullying aspects. I think a lot of times during the day, kids can send messages about each other, Snapchats, so that might take away from that piece to it. I think there's a lot of benefits to, they can still have them in the building, in their bags, they're still on them for emergencies, they have the ability to, to use them in those situations, but there's really, just, just focus on school for a little bit that you're there. It's not a very long day, and I think in the long run, it really would help the, the mind and the development, and I, I like, I think they did a good job with that.
Jenny?
I guess my, as being this generation that I'm in, I was surprised that they were even in school. Why would they need to be in school? I can understand about emergency, but I keep thinking there are other ways to contact parents, but that's fine. If they need it for emergency, that's fine, but I just, when I have my grandchildren over and I have them looking at their cellphone and say something to them and go like this, and there's absolutely no response, it seems to me, how, how are you hearing what your teacher is saying if you are that enthralled with your, your phone? So I'm, I think this is a great, I think you've done a wonderful job. I think it's very, very good.
So I am also in favor of a bell-to-bell cellphone ban, in fact, it was one of, it was one of my Post-its that are goal-setting, so I'm thrilled that we're sitting here right But I, again, I come to view it a little bit differently than I did in the beginning. I'm definitely more concerned with the addiction now than, than behaviors. And we're certainly not going to cure a cellphone addiction in the seven hours that we have the students, but I think that we do bear the responsibility of not perpetuating it. So that said, one of the things Ryan said a couple of times in our meeting was that they're not using their phones as phones, they're using them to scroll social media. So I'm, I'm not gonna advocate for this super hard, but I, I would like to see a carve-out for smartwatches, which is not in the current draft. Current draft bans smartwatches. Because to me, those are phone devices. I, if they can access social media, please let me know, because it's my understanding there, it's like a phone and texting device, which is largely not what the students are doing. It's just, as a parent, it's convenient, my kid can't lose it because it's attached to her body. It's school time during the day, doesn't make any noise, and then at the end of the day, she can use it just like a phone. Again, I'm not gonna advocate super hard for that. I think it's probably pretty likely that if we ban cellphones, even though we don't currently have a smartwatch problem, we would create a smartwatch problem. So I'm just, but I'm just gonna state it in case anybody else felt the same way, but if not, that's fine. Do we have further discussion on this? Go ahead, Marge.
Just a question on that, because, believe me, I am like, I am probably the most, close to the most literate person when it comes to electronic devices, et cetera, so forth, but exactly what can you do on a smartphone? I mean, other than, I mean, smartwatch. I mean, rather than just a phone call. I know people have other watches that do a lot of other stuff.
You can buy a couple of different types of watches, right? So it depends if it has a cellular signal, then it'll be just like a regular device with notifications. So that's one piece to think about from one manufacturer. We discussed in committee, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because in our buildings, first thing, if you had a watch that had cellular capability and your parents bought you a plan, then go ahead and try and get a signal in any of our buildings. Okay, so that's, I, I think that gets addressed in one way or the other. The, so to answer your question, it can be just like a phone or with the apps, but it's important, I think that we recognize that a lot of our athletes and people who are doing, using those devices, Joe's got a different one than I have, than you're wearing right now, and they, they use them for metabolic features and different apps that they would use through the day, and the idea with those is that they wear them in perpetuity, that you don't remove them for a period of time. So that is something I, I do support, looking at a carve-out for that, but just recognizing, even if the watch didn't have, let's say if it was an Apple device, if you had a phone that had a plan that was in a certain proximity, it would snap to the phone to sync to the watch. So that's another piece where if it's off, the way it's meant to be, that the watch wouldn't then have stuff coming to it. That's not to say if you got close to a wall that had a signal, so that's just something that we'd have to acknowledge and, and address on a case-by-case basis. But I'm an advocate for the smart devices only from the perspective of athletics or any type of metabolic, medical intervention. There's a lot of apps for diabetics, et cetera, so I would, I would do a carve-out for that.
I didn't know if that was the watch where, you know, like it can do your steps, and with some of it, it can give you your, your heart rate, they can give you, you know, a lot more information.
Yeah, like the Fitbits and all of that.
Yeah, so.
So what I, so I want to mention timing, I don't think we had addressed this yet. Implementing a change like this is just not possible during the school year. So we have two scheduled board meetings left, if this was something we wanted to do, we would have to have the first reading next week, and then the second reading on 26 or whatever that meeting is. And if we decide we want to wait on this, it would be another year before this would happen, just to acknowledge that. So what I need for my part is a sense of the board, do we want to bring this forward as-is for a first read next week? Is this something we want to wait on? Do we want to, you know, make some changes? We talked about maybe if we needed a policy meeting to make some changes, we could, or are we talking about striking one thing? Or, so I need to get a sense from everybody what, what we would like to do. Shar?
So I think we should move forward with it, this, right now, for next year. If the board decided in next school year to make a change to add a permission for smartwatches, then you can do that, right? Because it's more liberal, it's not more restrictive. So you could do that during the school year, and that would have, wouldn't have a big impact, but I would advocate for making this change now.
Okay, Marge?
I'm with, I'm with Shar on this one. I think we should do it now, but I also think there's a possibility, because the second reading wouldn't be till the 25th, that, that piece could be, you know, could be added between now and when we do the second reading. So there's that possibility before panic, before anybody gets into panic over the summer, saying, yeah, but I do my thing, I do my whatever is on this, or my child is, you know what I mean? So if we could possibly cover it before then.
That's true, I forget, we don't often make changes between first and second read, but we can, especially if they're not substantial. We, we have, but we just not, by practice, on a regular basis, that's all. Jess?
I agree. I think we do need to start this as soon as possible, it is a hot topic, and obviously affecting our education, or, well, our kids' education, but still, the sooner we do this, but then also at the beginning of the school year, it can be oriented that the teachers really need to 100% push this policy in every single classroom and throughout the school system.
I mean, it would be in all the handbooks updated, that was another timing piece, is we can't really wait till August because the handbooks are already done at that point.
Totally agree. I think we should go ahead with it.
Okay, it will be on for first read next agenda. Are we ready to move on to policies? May I have a motion, please?
I move, I move to approve the first reading of JJIF, Management of Concussion and Other Health Injuries.
Second? Public comment? For discussion?
Let me do a quick review of this one. Management of Concussions and Other Health Injuries. This policy was brought to the committee with a request for review and updating in response to the Department of Education Directive Letter, March 18th, 2025, instructing four districts to review their updated model policy, or using the model policy and resources that the DOE provided. We needed to look at our policy and procedures and update them accordingly. These updated resources provided by the DOE were developed based on the best up-to-date practices as published by the International Conference on Concussion in Sport and represent input collaboration and edits from DOE, coordinated school health staff, main association of nurses, MPA, Main Athletic Trainers Association, and several local university athletic training program directors. This is a required policy last reviewed March of 2013. We met and consulted with district nurses, Gail White and Carrie Jolly, athletic director, Nathan Pelletier via the superintendent's feedback, and our contracted athletic trainer, Casey Sinclair. During our process, we also reviewed the DOE's Concussion Management Resource Guide that was provided. Of course, I mentioned their model policies, MSMA, and we reviewed conceptually all seven exhibits that are associated with this policy. Just for a quick note, Exhibit 7 was the only one that was facing the public on our website, and it was more related to an interface with, with families. We're fully replacing our current policy as the language is out of date, and this is the recommended language per the DOE and MSMA, that's why there's no markups on the policy, it's a full replacement. Legal reference on this one would come in under Title 20A, MRSA subsection 25417, which outlines the commissioner's educational duties, number 17, under model policy for management of concussive and other head injuries. And then it also hits the school board's duties and responsibilities in 1001, under 19, adoption of policy to manage concussive and other head injuries, beginning January 1st, 2013. So I won't read that, but that's number 19, under our roles and responsibilities as a board. As for the exhibits, I'll just quickly mention, we now have one handbook that will, the nomenclature reflected will be JJIF-E. Through extensive meetings and review, our team has drafted a new document, not our team, but I'll say the RSU14 district team, that reflects all of the content from the seven exhibits into a single handbook. So I just want to recognize the significant improvement in this approach to concussion management by this team, and that was the nursing team, our assistant superintendent team, the AD, as well as KCR trainer. And the time that they invested in creating a handbook so that that will face families, that will include the content consolidated in a clear format for families to review with this complicated topic, the handbook will include resources, background education, injury assessment forms, return-to-school protocols, student-family information sheets, and return-to-play protocols, et cetera. That is a separate document that we don't have a voting purview over, but it is provided as a consolidated piece of information for our families, and will go alongside of this policy. So we are asking for you to take a look at this as a full replacement tonight.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next policy, please.
I move to approve the first reading of KBF Parent Involvement in Title I Programs.
Second? Public comment? For discussion?
Okay, so we have our curriculum director here tonight, so she's gonna help me if I say anything that's not quite on, on the mark here. So this is our parent involvement in Title I programs. This is a required pro, uh, policy, the exhibits are not required. This policy was last revised September 7th, 2016. Policy outlines how the school unit and each school within the district supports and implements parent guardian and family involvement with Title I. This policy addresses the fact that districts can apply for federal Title I funding through the main department of education, and these funding sources provide academic support for identified learners. Funding for Title I is authorized under the Every Student Succeeds Act, a federal law that provides funding for a wide range of educational programs and initiatives. The act describes specifically the requirements for recipients of Title I funding, of which is family involvement. This act outlines the involvement of parents, guardians, and families as a key component of students' academic success. This policy is unique in that there's a directive to include parental feedback and participation, and is prescriptive to the things that districts must do in order to qualify for the funds and parent versus school responsibilities. So that's unique. We don't typically have policies that would involve families and have a directive that we need to complete certain activities and have engagement that really needs to be done exactly how we described. We reviewed our policy against the MSMA sample and consulted legal with clarifying questions and ensured that our edits were in compliance with law. The Department of Education audits Title I programs intermittently, and it's imperative that districts follow through with the commitments the district makes regarding how the school unit will support and implement the parent guardian and family involvement activities and how these actions were documented. So in the event of an audit, here's our policy, here's how we did it, and this is the process. So our director of curriculum presents this to us, and there's a certain number of activities that she needs to go through as well in terms of applying for the grants on the annual basis, and one of those is presenting to the board. Changes to this policy appear to be substantial at first glance, however, you'll note that the struck portion at the bottom of the policy, this is our current policy, the committee reviewed our current policy language and is proposing a full replacement with the highlighted language, with the content broken down into board endorsement, our district-level parent involvement, the school parent involvement, parent relations, and the delegation of responsibility, which is part of all of our policies. The legal reference for this one is from Title 20 in Education, Chapter 70, strengthening and implement, implementing elementary secondary schools, Subchapter 1, improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged, and then Part A, Section 6318 for parent involvement. So I want to make sure that you understand that cadence of how it breaks down into Title 20, 20 under Education. Lastly, note that the KBF exhibits, there's E1 and E2 currently, we're proposing to eliminate these exhibits. The committee consulted with the director of curriculum and is making the recommendation that these exhibits have duplicate language that are now reflected in internal documents going forward, including a rubric that was created by the director of curriculum and for the policy and exhibits broken out by district-wide and building specific requirements. So I've mentioned this a couple of times, but just to be clear, Christine Hessler took the exhibits and the policy and created a rubric similar to our strategic plan, and each directive that was in it created a line item, and then who is responsible, and then they did a full audit of the district by building and by district-wide. Presented that back to the policy committee in our second review of this, and then went ahead and created, lastly, for us, a newly-developed academic support student progress report for literacy and mathematics, and that, I thought that that work was, was just terrific, just to, and that's the point of what we're trying to do, is work coordinately, and the amount of workload that we have on a yearly basis, but really getting into this and redoing the process, doing a full audit, I really appreciated the work that our curriculum director did with this one. So those exhibits will disappear out of this because they're in the policy language, and we're looking to have you just approve the newly, more robust language that represents the DOE's preference for audits on this one.
Any further discussion? All those, oh, sorry, Shar, go ahead.
I just noticed when I was skimming through this earlier, that in Section 3 in the second paragraph, it looks like there's supposed to be a number. There's got a number in like parentheses, is that supposed to, the way that it's supposed to read?
Yeah, just the words, number.
Well, that's great.
We will find out the number. Is everyone okay if we put the number in, and before we post to the website? Yeah, I mean, I can, yeah, first read on this one.
Yeah, we can, we can fix that by second read. Thanks, Shar. All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, new appointments. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the following appointments for the 2025-2026 school year. Marie Jacques, music teacher, RES, WPS. Marie Jacques, music teacher, RES, WPS, BA Step 2, salary of $51,914. Jennifer Fink, social worker, WMS, MA Step 25, $88,519. Kirsten Chansky, math coach, district-wide, MA Step 16, $80,321. Dylan Ingram, special ed resource room teacher, WMS, BA Step 8, $63,476. Kaylee Gipson, school psychologist, WPS, MA Step 3, $66,010. Jocelyn Coffin, kindergarten teacher, WPS, BA Step 1, $49,987. Ben Ferguson, 7th grade ELA teacher, JSMS, BA Step 1, $49,987. Susan Ray, standards-based teacher, RES, MA Step 22, $87,637.
Second? For discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, executive session. May I have a motion, please?
I move to enter executive session to discuss district office executive administrative contracts for ensuing contract years pursuant to 1 MRSA, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Second? All those in favor? Motion carries. We are in executive session.